I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Under report of the chair, I just want to give everybody a little update. I know the board has received copies of a couple of letters that went back and forth between the superintendent and I and town hall, so in the end of August, Joe and I were able to get that letter to the first selectman concerning the request to access Chalk Hill. We did not ask to get Chalk Hill back, I want to make that clear. Our request was to access Chalk Hill as it is a town building so that we can do our structural tests that we spoke about for the third floor and that type of stuff. So that letter went to First Selectman Rooney, end of August. On the third week of September, we received that letter back from the first selectman granting permission to access the building for whatever and we needed to do, or as much as we needed to do, to get that structural assessment done. At the last Board of Finance meeting, our superintendent, Joe, requested from the Board of Finance to set aside the surplus funds for some other things that he'll update us on about in a little while, but also a piece of that's going to go to the structural studies. We've been in touch with our representative from Silver Petroselli to get some estimates on that and, you know, who would be best to do that. So we have the funding, we have the permission, we have the funding, and we're going to get that going as soon as we can, Joe, all right? We're going to drive that forward.
Yep.
And I'll keep everybody updated on that. I would have liked to have gotten the Facilities Committee together this month to just keep a little of the work going, but it's a busy month. I know I have seven or eight meetings this month with Board of Ed and negotiations, so I'll try to, we'll try to set that up for November, Joe, just to get that committee back, back together. There's still some work to do with renovation decisions with that. So I just wanted to get that out to anyone. Alan, did you have a question?
Yeah, what, is there like a general timeline for the engineers, to the structural engineers?
I'd like to go as soon as possible with it. So we've already reached out, Joe has already reached out to Silver Petroselli, got some estimates. You know, they know people that do this, that are experts on this, and, you know, each step at a time. So hopefully, the, the goal of this study is, yes, you can add a third floor, no, you can't add a third floor. The building is viable, it's not viable, because we can't do anything without, anything further without those answers. And this will be a structural engineer. Dan has, from Facilities, has the plans, so everything could get provided to him, the original plans, right, Joe? Yeah, he's got all that. So I just wanted to update the board that we're, we're moving forward with it, so. Any other questions on that? Okay, thank you very much. Public participation, anyone here for public participation? Public participation? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we're going to move forward with our consent agenda. Any board members have any questions or comments on the minutes in our packet? No, how about approval of warrants? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, can I have a second? Can I, oh, Jerry? Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. We're going to go to the reports of the committees, starting with our students, if I can say it.
Good evening, I hope you're all having a marvelous Monday. As this week begins, I have to say an enormous weight has been taken off my shoulders as we concluded Homecoming Week, ending with a homecoming dance on Saturday. Thank you to all the families that have donated. For seniors, October is a very busy month. The first deadline for early capstone presenters is next week, with presentations tentatively scheduled for November 3rd. If that wasn't enough, seniors are definitely feeling the pressures of the ongoing application process, with early action deadlines creeping up as soon as October 15th. This being said, Ree and I definitely won't have much free time in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, now for the exciting stuff. Spirit Week in Homecoming was amazing. I know I had a lot of fun dressing up, and I'm a little sad that it was my last one, but I'm glad it ended with a good week. The pep rally was also very fun this year. We had our usual finish the lyrics and the tug of war. The seniors lost for once, but it's okay, because we had the most spirit. For Homecoming, this was definitely our most successful dance yet. We had over 600 attendees at the dance, so the dance floor was very hyped. I'm very excited to continue the senior festivities.
And this week's sports report. So Massey Football had a big win on Friday against New Mufford, 49-7. The students showed their school spirit by wearing pink. The student section supported breast cancer awareness by throwing pink powder. Other sports that have think pink games coming up are field hockey, which is tonight, boys soccer is tomorrow, girls volleyball on the ninth, and girls soccer on the 14th. And this week's upcoming sports schedule is girls volleyball, senior night, home; boys soccer away, home; girls soccer away, cross-country away on Tuesday; field hockey away on Wednesday; boys soccer, senior night, home; girls soccer away, girls volleyball away on Thursday. Then Friday, football has a bye, and girls swim is home, and Saturday is girls soccer, home, field hockey away.
That's it? That's a lot. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as board reports, I know we have our first Health and Safety Committee meeting coming up next Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. Any other committee reports from board members?
Pension committee put off.
Pension committee is off, okay. Alan?
I'm on the curriculum committee. Problem is, I can never get there. I'm like, oh, for the year, last year. It's just, you know, a lot of the meetings are like when I'm working, so I don't want to take the fun away from someone else who might be interested in joining, so.
What time are they?
You see, at four.
Yeah.
Well, you switch your CES, they have those at three.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Are you allowed to talk at CES?
No.
Yes, yes, until they mute you, because you're saying something intelligently.
All right, if anyone would like to fill in for Alan when they can, please let Joe or I know.
I could be an alternate.
An alternate, okay. Why don't we do that, put Chrissy on, let Chrissy know, we'll put Chrissy on as an alternate.
I could be a car driver on two wheels, but.
That's all right. You can screech in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other reports?
Just for CES, we're meeting again this week, but in the last meeting, there was a lot of conversation around the potential of the state not fully funding the magnet school tuitions and that, putting pressure on the districts, so I think there's more to come. There's been a lot of back and forth, Joe, you might know more than I do at this point.
No, I mean, that's, that's the big story right now.
Seems like it's in the air.
Yeah.
What would happen?
The pressure's there, but if it's not going to be funded by the state, it doesn't mean we have to pick up the difference.
Well, that is what they're saying, that the towns will have to pick up the difference.
They're already ridiculous, so.
Would they have to vote on that, the state legislator?
I don't know. That's a good question, I could ask that on Thursday, we meet this week.
They had capped the district's tuitions, so our tuition was supposed to be capped.
Right.
It's we don't have to pay anymore.
Legislation does cap it, right. I don't know if they'll look to change that, so it wouldn't affect us this year, I'm assuming.
I don't know, keep us updated, that, that could, yeah.
Yeah.
Potential impact.
It sounds like there's a lot of upset about it.
And I know people have reached out to Tony already about this, Tony Scott.
Yeah.
I imagine the other ones too.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else on committees?
Policy tonight, I have something for the next meeting, go in the library, library goes.
Okay.
The one that is one, one of them.
Okay, good, good. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the report of the superintendent, Joe.
Got it. Jen, if she could start as well, with the special update.
Hi, everyone.
Should we tell Jen that she could have just went to that chair? Next time.
She's a creature of habit.
I'll use that one next time.
Next time, and then we'll switch it on you.
I'll be back next one. Okay, so, starting with enrollment, we had one student who moved in the month of September, and that student does qualify for excess cost. We had two students that moved out of district, and we had five students who were made eligible for services, so that brings us to 676 at this moment. Looking at our financials, anybody have questions about enrollment?
How does that compare to last year at this time? Is it higher than, or about the same?
It's a little bit higher, not much, though.
Okay, that's good.
Looking at financials.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Tell me that. How about the high expense was, is it higher or the same?
So this time last year, we already had two. We had a total of three last year, the whole year. Yeah, the year before was much, much higher.
Thanks.
Yep. So if we're looking at our financials, we pretty much have everything encumbered that we're aware of to date. If you look on page 33 of your packet, you can see that our transportation line is over significantly. It's over $220,000. That is due to the known encumbrances that we have at this time. We have five students who are, whose programming changed since last year after the budget, so that's why that line is, is high right now. We also have within there, we are transporting three homeless students. So we are also paying for transportation for those students as well. So that's, we're watching that line carefully, but they are encumbrances right now. They are not bills that we've paid yet, but encumbrances that we are aware of.
Any questions for Jen?
So that's where we are right now.
The homeless, where are you driving them to? That's the question.
Yeah, I'd rather not say, but it's not in Monroe, for sure, so, yes.
Anyone else? No? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Go ahead, Joe.
You got it. The October 1 enrollment, so, as I've mentioned before, enrollment is captured twice a year officially, although Lisa Sheskin, our district data specialist, does a great job of, of keeping it updated all year, but it's, it is officially reported to the state on October 1, and then again on the last day of school. So I just wanted to, just wanted to keep us all apprised of where we are this year compared to last year. So this is our October 1 enrollment summary. This top, this top piece here represents this current school year, and this bottom one is last year at October 1. So it gives us kind of a nice window of where we were last year, where we were this year. Couple of quick highlights here. We are about, so this, this total here is total, which includes preschool, and then this total here is just K through, is just K through 12 here. We are about, I think it was 44 students fewer this year than we were last year, K through 12, and 42 students lower total pre-K through 12 at this time last year. The big switch, and I've talked about this before, we have fewer, one less section of kindergarten at Monroe Elementary this year, and that is our kindergarten numbers. If you look at, half of that, half of that enrollment dip this year from last year is in kindergarten. So, I guess, 42 kids, 21 of them are right here. If you look at last year in kindergarten, we had 212, this year we have 191. And really keeping a close eye on that, because remember last year, that new legislation came in, it came in at the end of the, at the end of the session, so folks did not have a chance to get ready for it, so a lot of people, you know, pushed through the waiver system. Now people have had a whole year to prepare for it, so a lot of folks are keeping their kids, you know. My, my theory is, a lot of people are keeping their kids out for this year, because they were able to secure daycare for the, for the additional year. So this will be really interesting to see what happens next year, because I think next year we'll capture a full year's worth of, a full year's worth of kids. I've heard a lot of, you know, people, not just from September to December keeping their kids out, but even now, you're starting to, starting to hear of, you know, the August and July babies, some parents keeping their kids out, because they'll be the youngest of their group now, kind of like people that used to keep their November and December kids out, because they would be the youngest there. So that's really, you know, that's the, that's the big, you know, that's kind of the biggest story here. So half of that, again, we're down 42 kids from last year, half of that is in, is in kindergarten. If you look at, with a few minor exceptions, this, I've talked about this before, we talked about it during the ad hoc facilities study. This district has a really good track record of maintaining and adding kids as we go through the year. So you'll see a few exceptions where that's not the case, but if you look here, last year's K group of 212 became this year's one group of 223. But this is one of the exceptions, last year's first grade of 274 became 271, so they lost three students. Then as you go from there, 244 became 253, 283 became 290, 254 became 257, 267 became 269, all the way, all the way up and up and up. So we, we generally see that from year to year as we, as we, as students matriculate through the grades. Our kids generally tend to, you know, our grades, our section sizes generally seem to increase. And it's really, I think it speaks very highly of our schools, especially when you look at, you know, last year's eighth grade of 249, and then this year's ninth grade of 252. That's a, usually we used to see a little bit of drop, maybe like a 5% drop from eighth grade to ninth grade, because that's when you go to.
Private school.
Private school, same to parochial schools, Fairchild, Wheeler, magnet schools, whatever. But we're still, you know, we're still adding kids from the eighth to ninth grade transition. So if you look, you know, each school is down a few kids from last year to this year. Jackie, I'm sorry, Juan Hollow is down seven kids from last year to this year. Monroe Elementary is down 13, 18 kids. Stepney's down 12, 12, 24 kids. Yeah, one exception is Jackie Hollow. Jackie Hollow is up from 765 to 788, and Massey is, you know, right around the same spot. So literally, I think they dropped about 18, 18 students. So something that we will keep an eye on, you know, throughout this year. And then really, I think, I think our kindergarten numbers, actually, I talked to our demographer as these numbers were coming in over the summer, and, you know, he, that was his theory at the time is, you know, this was the first full year that families had to actually prepare for the kindergarten change, so we should, we should probably likely see capture 12 months of kindergarten students next year. Just, and this isn't, it's kind of tough to get it all on one side, but just all in one slide, but just at the elementary, just to, you know, for, for your awareness, just kind of where we are. We try to be as equitable as possible around the district with our, with our students, with our section sizes at each of the schools. So you see, each of the schools here, you know, Monroe, pre-K through grade five, and then the other, the other two elementary schools, K through five, the number of sections and the section sizes. Two, two big things that stood out from last year, you know, we had, we reduced one kindergarten section there, and we reduced a first grade section. Of course, you know, we were down to, I think, 41 kids. This was one area that we actually saw a little bit of jump from last year to this year. So we have one section of 22 and one section of 23 there in first grade, which is really pushing it. We don't want to go any higher than that, but in line to what we have done, in line, what we've done in the past as well, and we see it the best we can. I mean, there's, obviously there's greater efficiency if you're all in one building to have, you know, some, much more commonality across sections if you're all in one building, but for the most part, we do a really good job of trying to keep the schools equitable in terms of class sizes.
Joe, is this tracking with what Silver Petroselli's consultant said, or are we slightly under?
We're slightly under. We're, this, this number right here is slightly under. That's who I had spoken to this year, saying, hey, you know, we're under, and I said the big thing that we're saying is the kindergarten. When they did their, when they did their demographic analysis of us, they did that. That was before the legislature had changed the kindergarten cutoff reach.
The interesting thing is, where's that number in June?
Wait.
Right, our end of year.
Yep.
A lot of parents contest that.
I'm sorry?
The kindergarten thing, though, a lot of parents contest that.
We have a, we have a process, we have a waiver process in, in district where, basically, our stance has been, since the beginning anyway, and I, I understand there is some conversation to have the legislation changed, and maybe make those more definite, you know, September 1, you know, just be a cutoff. Right now, our, our stance has been, you know, come in, do the waiver process, they go through an assessment, they meet with our pre-K staff, and even our pre-K school psychologists. We get reports from the preschools where they're going, we get reports from the parents, and then we meet with the parents and we say, hey, listen, we think it's, you know, your kid seems to be doing fine, you know, at this time, and that they can start. Or we'll say, hey, you know, we have some really serious concerns, and your child, you have to understand that this is a 13-year decision. You know, some people at first would say, well, you know, I'll let them waiver in, and then I'll just hold them back after you, we're not getting on that cycle. If they're starting, they're starting, and this is a, so I said, it's a 13-year decision. But ultimately, we leave the decision up to the parents with, you know, with a lot of information. That's, that's been our stance so far, you know, whether or not that changes, we'll see what happens after the short session.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice if they just didn't flip-flop on that.
Yeah.
Because it is an expense, another unfunded mandate, because you got to bring the kids in, do the assess, assessments, and.
Our pre-K staff does an amazing job, but to your point, Alan, it's every, you know, every Wednesday for a month, that they're just doing, they're just doing evaluations all month. What would have made sense to me is, if they had kind of graduated into this, and made that a firm date in the first year, because it was such a, such a late cutoff, make it December 1st, the second year make it November 1st, the third year make it October 1st, and then, so then you have, you know, time for people to, you know, to prepare for it. But.
They didn't. Joe, would you request more or less than last year at this point?
I'm sorry?
At this time, would you request more or less than last year?
Less, or a lot less.
There are fewer this year, yeah. And I think that's the, I think that also reflects the fact that, you know, people had, they had a year to, I mean, the, the session ended last year in June, and then, you know, those laws went into effect July 1. You know, the people had no, no time to secure, you know, daycare for their kids. Any other questions on this? Also, in the, in your packet is the, it's hard to believe we're talking about it already, but thanks to Ron, not, I mean, that wasn't sarcastic. But thanks to Ron for putting together the, the timeline for the, oh wait, no, I'm not at that right now.
Surplus.
I'm sorry, surplus, sorry about that. Thanks to Ron, we have a surplus. Dave mentioned this, alluded to this a little bit earlier. At the last Board of Finance meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, the board voted to transfer our fiscal year 25 surplus funds, both Board of Ed and Town funds. Our, our final surplus was $212,000. We asked that the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance agreed, to set the money aside to fund the following projects. Number one, which is what we talked about already, is the structural engineering assessment for Chalk Hill. Dan also identified some burner, boiler upgrades at Jackie Hollow, as well as, if you remember, we, we replaced the gym floor at Stepney a couple of years ago. The one at Juan Hollow was put in at the same time. The one at Stepney was in worse shape, but the one in Juan Hollow is going to need to be replaced as well, so kind of put, put it aside for all of that. I did reach out, when Michelle Miller was working with the ad hoc committee, she did secure a quote from us from Michael Horton Associates to do the structural engineering assessment at Chalk Hill. I reached out to them, I've left them a message, I have to file back up them, I hadn't, hadn't heard back yet. Wasn't exorbitantly expensive, a lot of it is studying the, the plans, as I think Dave was mentioning before, you know, some of the original plans, see if it's structurally prepared to, you know, could have taken a third floor if it had to.
Can we get a timeline from them? It's normally like four to six weeks, I think, but, you know, let's see what they say.
I'll get one for you, yes, yeah, as soon as, as soon as I hear back from them, yeah.
And Sheila, the letter to the first selectman and the letter back from the first selectman, could, could those go on our site under the Facility Study tab, please?
That's a good idea, yeah.
All right, just so we have everything all there for the public, all right?
Any questions on that? Any other questions on that? The next thing is the, is the timeline for the, for the budget, that's what I was talking about before. It's pretty much, you know, barring a day here or there, it's pretty much the same timeline that we adhere to every other year. The only thing I'll say is, once we get into January, once I, when I present the executive summary, I'll have the, those are the budget workshop dates that we've set aside, and I'll just have the individual departments, you know, at that time, when they'll be doing it. I think we usually add more workshop dates than we need in case there's an issue and we have to have, in case we have to have dates.
And if it's okay with you and the board, you know, for the assignments for board members, just shift it one.
You want me to push everybody ahead?
You okay with that?
Yeah, so that everybody's with different departments.
You don't have to worry about it.
Yep.
And also, I think with the negot, I'm sorry, with the contracts that we've been settling, we'll be in, right, Ron, wouldn't you agree we'll have a much better snapshot for next year's budget? As far as your planning and all that, with, with all the contracts that have come up in the last year? That was your segue, Joe.
You got it. That was my segue to help. We, we're starting the teacher negotiations actually tomorrow, and thank you today for being on that. As you know, we've recently done paras, we've done secretary, I'm sorry, we've done nurses, and we did maintenance. We will have secretaries coming up as well, their, their collective bargaining agreement expires at the end of this year, so we'd like to try to do those. So if anyone's interested in that, Dennis, awesome, thank you.
And who's the attorney representing us for the teacher contracts?
Steve Seedorf, yep.
Still Steve, but not Paul Mignolet anymore, right?
Correct.
Kane and Esclera, yep.
Oh, he's not with Paul Mignolet?
No. The last thing I have is just, I know we've done this in the past, but, you know, we always want to try to strengthen, you know, board understanding of district initiatives and any current educational practices, and I know we've had a number of, kind of, you know, short professional learning segments for, for, you know, done during board meetings. You know, the whole idea of that is to, you know, provide context and background for topics that, you know, inform the decision-making process and strategic planning of, of the board. So, you know, in the past, we've, we've done a number of things. I ask if anyone has any topics of interest that they might be thinking of, you could be thinking curriculum and assess, curriculum and instruction, things like the science of reading, or illustrative math, or MTSS, or any operational things. I, I just thought it was a good idea. I know we've, we've done this in the past, where we've had, you know, professional learning for all of us, so, you know, we're kind of all on the same page. But like I said, could be curriculum instruction, operational, budgeting, facilities, all of that good stuff, or, I know we've, we've talked a little bit, we scratched the surface on artificial intelligence. I know our AI team had, had met with the board last year. They also, they have furthered that work, and actually just met with Parents Council recently. So if you have any, anything that you're, you know, really burning on, or if you want me to throw out some ideas too, I could, I could throw some ideas out there.
What about math?
Illustrative math, I'd say, yep, yep.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, just to see what's being done, and what's being changed.
Yep.
Dennis?
Sideboard safety issue.
Yeah.
The, when you're looking at the football field stadium, that hill to the left is just kid crazy. Anyway, fencing it off the star, I mean, I've heard from police, I've heard from EMS, and I'm like, you know, it's just, the parents are all enjoying the game, which is great, but the kids.
And they roll down the hill.
Yeah. Just if we could do something, I don't know what there is to do, but extended bleachers, I don't know.
We've added two more supervisors, one at the top of the hill, one at the bottom.
When to push them, when to catch them.
It was much better, it was much better this past Friday. Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of them, unfortunate, we had a middle school teacher up top, because a lot of them are actually the middle school students that are high school staff, I don't know, but Rob Trust was there, and it was definitely much better this past year.
The other thing that, I guess is better than being on the hill and fun, but usually during the games, there is the largest game of Kill the Carrier being played on the, on that upper, on that upper field, but right now that upper field is completely shut down, because that's where we just had all of that, all of that work done, and so I imagine we're getting more kids on the hill than we used to, because the kids used to be, you know, running around like crazy people on the, on the top field, which is probably safer, but right now that, that field is, you know, it's gotten receded and whatnot.
And if you haven't seen the new press box, go, go down with, with Joe or Sheila or Dan, take a look. It's there, Steve, it's very nice.
It worked all day?
No. We're going to go after the meeting, roll down the hill.
Yeah.
Digressing one, talking about upcoming negotiations. I've asked Joe, next meeting on the 20th, to do an executive session, not only for his goals and objectives, but because of that going on with MEA, we'll have to have a conversation, so. Anything else for Joe?
Congratulations on the rankings. Rankings for Massey, rankings for the school district, very nice. How many, how many, 169 towns, how many high schools are there?
More than 169.
190, 200, it's got to be close to that.
How many districts?
I mean, there's 169 towns.
174 district?
Exactly.
I used to know that, yeah, I think it's 174 districts.
When you knew there were a block of cabins, so talk about recent.
Yes, yeah. And the patch article had a 16th in the states?
16th, and the, the high school was 12th, I think, right? So, nice, good luck.
Good job, guys, yeah. Keep up the good work.
Good people.
The administrators are all right.
That had to come out right before negotiations? No, it's good work by everybody, good work. All right, we have no unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. Joe, you want to talk about this one, or Steve?
Sure, I'll kick it off, and Steve, if I miss something, that's fine. So this is just a slight change, the, when there is a night conferences, teachers have an early release day, and it really doesn't make a lot of sense for them to have an early release day the same night as the, as a night conference, because they got to, mostly enough to stay, having to stay here to stay here the whole time anyway. So this was just asking for a simple change to move the November 11th, that's when the, what is it, one of the parent conferences.
It's the second night.
Second night of parent conference.
We already moved it to the first night, we just want to move it to the second.
14th.
Yeah. So that would be a regular day of school, and then they would get, you know, they would be granted the early release day on the Friday.
So it's a calendar change, so it has to come to us?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions on that, from anybody?
It's November 14th.
Yes.
It would be instead of the 11th, the 14th.
Can I have a motion to move Massey's half day from November 11th to November 14th, 2025? Greg, seconded by Dennis, any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, eyes have it, motion passes. Our next meeting is on 10/20.
Could I add one more thing, unfinished business, because you went so fast through it, I just...
Yep.
I have a question. So I realize you don't have a crystal ball, and I know we've asked this enough. So if the structural engineering survey is done by spring, let's say, you want it to meet with building facilities, right, coming up?
I'd like to have a meeting in November, yeah.
Okay, that's what I...
Yeah, yeah, because we, we didn't finish, yes.
Oh, I agree.
Step one was the needs, and then step two are the, the buildings itself, and any renovations, remodels, that are above and beyond our normal capital projects. So that's what the committee spoke about, prioritizing those.
So Joe, once you find out, you're gonna shoot us an email?
Absolutely.
Hopefully by the 20th, we'll know when it's happening.
When it's scheduled, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We even had that stuff kind of in the works, you know, yeah, ahead of time. Go ahead, Jerry.
I guess it's motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Mr. Stevens, shockingly. Can I have a second on that? Dennis, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, motion approved. Good night, everybody.